I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. If you could call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Lee is absent. Trustee Hines.
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman.
Ye.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
Trustee Bond.
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Moving on, we have public participation. This is the two-minute opportunity for any member of the public that's here this evening that would like to address the board on any topic. If there's anybody, come down to the podium. If you could introduce yourself, and if there is a sign-in sheet, if you could write your name and address down there, that'd be great.
All right.
Before or after is fine.
My name's Greg Spears. I'm at 2434 Simon Drive. Recently, the Montgomery Foundation has donated several free little libraries, which are placed throughout the community. And I guess I'm asking for the village's support and participation in placing it at Deer Point Drive and Concord. There's a gazebo there, and I think that that would be a good place, a couple trails. So I think the biggest thing would be placing a post in the ground, so.
Awesome.
Okay.
It's good to see you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
A pleasure meeting Greg this weekend. We had a groundbreaking four little free library that's in the Fairfield Way subdivision at the park there, that's on Park District property. I know that our ordinance, we revised that a few years ago to allow these on, you know, we'd have to look at the specifics of the location, but.
I believe it's village.
Okay.
I think it's in the region. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, hearing none, I'll move on. We have the swearing-in of Sergeant Gregory Maye. With that, I'll turn it over to the chief, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to introduce our new patrol sergeant, Greg Maye. In the audience tonight is his father and mother, Byron and Lori, his wife Kathy, and his two sons, Jackson and Noah. If you recall, Greg was hired in September of 2010 and promoted here May 1st, 2016, by the Police Commission. Prior to that, Greg worked at Downers Grove Police Department, and prior to that, he had graduated from Downers Grove North High School in 2002, and he attended Western Illinois University, received a double major, one in criminal justice and administration of law enforcement, and a sociology bachelor of science degree also. He also, during that four-year, minored in computer science. So tonight, I'd like to introduce our newest sergeant, Greg Maye.
Repeat after me. Aye, Greg Maye.
Aye, Greg Maye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of Sergeant of police.
The duties of Sergeant of police.
Do the best in my ability. I will say, from my point of view, over the last six years that you've been with the village, I've heard nothing but the highest praise of your work here in Montgomery, and look forward to a long career with you. And again, you guys are welcome to stay the whole meeting. It'll be a ton of fun, but if you want to go home, you can. We have Item C, the Fairfield Way Homeowners Association. With that, Ben Rosasca is here.
I didn't see anything in the house.
Hand a picture.
Thank you. I didn't prepare anything, because I was kind of thrown into this. But I wanted to allude that Fairfield Way did put in a little free library this past weekend. We dedicated it to the community. It was decorated by one of our residents, Jennifer Jones, who's on a cruise and also can't be here. But if we have some pictures here, there's a group of people that dedicated it with us, and that's what it looks like. Beautiful little library. So if you just can, come on out to Fairfield Way Park and exchange a book.
And that's the back, right there.
And I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for installing the post for us, and they had also installed a bench for us on the other side of our pond, which is pretty much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. And also, at that dedication, we had three representatives from the Fox Valley Park District, too, so they've been very supportive of this initiative, and so we look forward to that going forward. We'll move on. We have four public hearings. We'll start with the first one. Public hearing for O'Reilly Auto Parts Special Service Area. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address that topic? So I'll open the public hearing, if there are no comments from the public or the board, I suppose. All right. I'll close that public hearing. We'll move on to Item E, Public Hearing for Montgomery Business Center Special Service Area. Again, I'll open the public hearing. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Move on to Item F, Public Hearing for Speedway Special Service Area. I will open that. Hearing none, I'll close that public hearing. And lastly, we have Public Hearing for Michael's Corporation Special Service Area. I'll open that public hearing. Everybody the opportunity to talk on that. And I guess I should have said the reasoning behind these. Staff, want to give like a summary of these four, and why it is that we need to have the public hearing on that?
Sure. This is part of the SSA, the Backup SSA Program, for stormwater management issues, if they should arise, with both a backup and a permanent SSA for maintenance purposes. So the village monitors that process in terms of quality of the stormwater and the efficiency of the program.
So in the case of these single users, we wouldn't levy an SSA unless they weren't doing the work, correct?
Yes.
To maintain those, or generally speaking?
Yes.
Okay. I think it's good to read it right. All right. Thank you. I will now read the, moving on to consent. I'll read the consent items and entertain a motion for approval. We have minutes of the village board meeting of May 9th, executive session minutes from May 9th, minutes of the special village board meeting of May 18th, the building report from May of 2016, accounts receivable report for April of 2016, and Item F is the accounts receivable report for May of 2016, accounts payable for FY '16 through May 19th, accounts payable for FY '17 through May 19th, accounts payable for FY '16 through June 9th, and accounts payable for FY '17 through June 9th. I have appointment by the village president of Jeanne Lee to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the appointment of Gene Michaels also to the HPC for the same term through May 31st of 2019. Cancellation of the committee at the whole meeting, that was supposed to be next week. Waiver of the temporary liquor license fee for the Montgomery Foundation for Montgomeryfest. Temporary liquor license for Pet Supplies Plus event, August 20th through 21st. And Item P is A&amp;A Attractions Carnival Permit. Are there any questions? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, call the roll.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman.
Ye.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. All right. Under Items for Separate Action, we have Item A, Recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals for 2016-015, Fence Height Variance Located at 309 Second Avenue by Terry, and I don't want to pronounce that wrong. Jacque.
Arco.
What's that?
I'm not sure how to pronounce it either.
Okay. With that.
Thank you.
Staff's introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the last zoning board of appeals meeting, the request for 309 Second Avenue for a fence variance, primarily for a front yard setback, was reviewed by the plant commission, or I'm sorry, reviewed by the zoning board of appeals. A recommendation was brought forward by the Board of Appeals to deny the request for the variance. They felt that it did not meet the criteria within the zoning ordinance for the granting of a variance. Subsequently, the applicant has withdrawn his petition for a variance. So accepting the recommendation would be appropriate at this time, and there'd be no further action.
Motion to accept planning commission's recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Item B, Ordinance 1726, Amending Chapter 3 1/2 of the Village Code Regarding Amusement Devices and Billiard Parlors. First reading.
This is the first reading. We've talked about this in the past, in terms of the regulation of licensing for amusement devices. We've looked at this in terms of what it generates, in terms of revenue, and it's quite minor, a couple thousand dollars a year for those devices that are located in restaurants or other types of facilities. This is completely separate from the video poker machines that are regulated by the state, so this has nothing to do with those regulations at all. Given that, in the past, and I'm talking in the distant past, I think previous village boards were more concerned with these type of devices in terms of some types of gambling activity, but also control of what you used to think of as a classic game room, long before there were video games that people could access in their own homes and on their handheld devices. So the need for regulating these in terms of a license was felt to be cumbersome and no longer, at least in terms of the staff's opinion, needed. So we're recommending, and we've worked with Laura and the village attorney's office to put together this amendment that would basically take this requirement in terms of licensing out of the municipal code. So we'd just like the discussion with the village board in terms of their thoughts on this item, and we can go forward in any manner that you would like.
Thank you.
Discussion.
How many permits do we currently issue?
There are less than 25, I believe, that have been issued in the past, or each year, I should say. It's renewable each year.
25 locations or 25 devices?
Total. Total.
Wow.
It does seem like it would be a lot of work just to regulate a pinball machine, or somebody who has a Pac-Man machine in their business. I don't have any problem with changing this.
I'm fine with it.
Where is the line of demarcation for someone who has a lot of them, like an amusement facility?
The way it reads now is that the maximum number any one facility could have would be 15. That's what's in the code currently. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the license is $50 for each machine annually.
Wow.
So if you wanted more than 15, you would need permitted use as an amusement operation?
Yes.
And I believe in the last year, we increased that from some number to 15, but I think this, we would be increasing that even more, the number as well. Go ahead. Yeah.
Thank you. So what Rich is talking about is the current status of the ordinance. With this amendment, we'd actually have a couple of different classifications. One would be your, what I would say is Vegas-style video game that could arguably be a gambling machine if somebody chose to act illegally. Those will keep that 15-unit or 15-permit limit, but the other classification, which is your Pac-Man, your Asteroids, you know, that kind of game that, unless you're very creative, I can't think of a way for it to be gambling, those would be unlimited. So you could have 50 if you wanted to. They're not regulated. And the third classification, which we're not touching again, is video gaming, which is regulated by the state.
How would you, just for sake of discussion, distinguish between Pac-Man and a video gaming instance?
We define it in the ordinance so that, as I said, the descriptor has more to do with your traditional gambling-type activities. So if it looks like roulette, or cards, or blackjack, you know, whether it's video.
Game of chance.
Yeah, the, you know, Vegas-style.
Okay.
Those are subject to the permitting, but the Asteroids, Pac-Man, those sorts of things are not.
Okay.
Any other comments? Is something that you guys are supportive, and this would be no fee for any three of these, correct?
No, there would still be a fee for the ones that are not exempt.
Okay.
In other words, the Vegas-style games would still have a limit and a permit, I believe. The Pac-Man would have no limit, no permit.
Okay.
We're just talking about like the classic games from way back when.
Remember when you went to an arcade back in the day? That's what we're talking about.
Which would include pinball machines.
Okay. I'm seeing head nods, so.
All right. We will bring this back then. Proceed.
Thank you. All right, move on to Item C, Ordinance 1727, Amending the Village Code, Chapter 2-10, Regarding Village Service Accounts, and this is the waiver of first and passage on the second.
Who wants it? All right.
Thank you. So this is a very small amendment. We're only adding one, two, three, six, seven words to the ordinance that allows us to tack on amounts due and owing to the village onto your village service account. And remember, your village service account is the concept that it's not just your water, it's everything that the village provides, such that if you are delinquent in any of those things, you have the potential of the penalty of getting your water turned off, a strong motivator, if you will. So we realized that while we encapsulated that there were other things that could qualify, we didn't explicitly say it, that those things qualify. So what we're only adding is the words "and any other amounts owed to the village." So we're very clear that if you owe something to the village, regardless of how it got there, it's on your village service account. That is the full sum of the change.
Okay. Comments?
Justin, are we currently having an issue with outstanding monies owed in these different aspects, I guess, then, from what's due for water?
There are a few minor items that we are having a couple of issues with, but nothing huge.
Nothing major.
So.
Okay.
And if you don't pay this, if you don't pay your bill that comes out, we would have the option of shutting your water off, but not the requirement to shut your water off.
Correct.
So you still have that choice.
For Attorney Anderson, do we, the people who are in that situation, do we have to give them some kind of notice that, hey, this is coming, or how is that going to be handled?
Each different category of potential violation comes with its own set of notices, and they have to be complied with regarding what it is. So, for example, if it's your water bill, there are specific notice requirements. If it's, you know, a weed lien or something like that, there's specific notice requirements. So those don't change. They all remain the same. This is just making clear that they all fall within the rubric or the category of your village service account, which ultimately could lead to the water shut-off. But as the mayor pointed out, you don't have to do that, simply because, let's say, they have a sprinkling ban violation. You know, you don't have to shut off their water, but in theory, you could.
So that, let's say it's the sprinkling ban.
Sure.
So that violation would show up on their water bill?
Eventually.
It would be listed there at some point to say, you have this outstanding violation, it's now due, and then, as I read it, that would be the first thing that would be paid on anything they paid.
Yes.
Like if they were paying their water bill, it would go to that fine first, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
I got it. I'm good. Thank you.
So this would include if someone doesn't mow their lawn, and the village has to come out? So this puts a little teeth into that, that they don't just get free lawn mowing service?
They definitely do not get free lawn mowing service, and actually, this gives you a double whammy for it. One is, you have the right to file a lien against the property, which is very compelling. But this is, sometimes liens don't get paid until houses get sold or foreclosed. This, if you've got an active homeowner who lives here and uses water, this would give you an additional tool short of that.
But if a person has sanitary problems because they got little kids and they need to flush the toilet and stuff, then I think you'd have to look into it, wouldn't you?
As far as shutting off the water is concerned?
As far as shutting off the water.
Yes, and that hasn't changed. You have all the discretion you always have had.
Okay.
In those instances, we can reduce water pressure as well, just to kind of inconvenience the resident, but not totally eliminate water service. That inconvenience over a period of time may be a motivator.
Any other questions? For staff?
I'm a little troubled by being judgmental in getting ourselves into deciding who's entitled to continued service and who isn't. Personally, I'd be a little more comfortable if it's black or white, and just kind of putting that out there. Whether they have children, or old people, or whatever, the condition is the same.
Generally, if they make the shut-off list, we're going to shut them off. There are some times where there may be a medical issue, where we have a note saying we can't shut them off, they have a need for the water, but otherwise, we are.
Hate to see us put ourselves in the middle there.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on this?
Sure.
I'll move to approve this.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
Ye.
Trustee Youngerman.
Ye.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Item D, Resolution 2016-3, To Approve MFT Purchase. That I'll turn it over to Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before you, there's a resolution for the use of MFT motor fuel tax-generated monies to be spent on the purchase of rock salt, weather forecasting, and calcium chloride, if needed, for the 2016-2017 season. This value of $84,400 is significantly less than in previous years due to the large volume of rock salt remaining in our inventory. I ask for your approval so we can finalize this request for funding. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Questions?
I have a question, if I may. And this is pertaining to the existing salt that we have. We've got that undercover, correct? We approved some sort of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There are no other comments? Entertained motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman.
Ye.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Bond.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Hines.
That carries 5-0. Thank you. Item E this evening is Street Painting Design and Location.
Engineer Wallers.
All right, Engineer Wallers.
So I think you recall that we've been talking about painting and design in the street on River Street for a little bit, and in reviewing the way this is handled in other communities, it's pretty clear that there's a permit process. We are going to be on a public street, so I think it's appropriate to permit not only the design, but just the notion of it, and kind of go through the steps. So we have, we've finalized the design, and we need a few items that we need direction on, the exact placement and size, and that's what I want to talk about tonight. But also, there's been a couple of other things that have come up in conjunction, and this is, you know, part of a theme for the village, which is Montgomery in Motion. So the village has purchased the, these are going to be the banners that are going to go out on River Street, so that kind of reinforces the concept. Now, one thing I just want to point out is that the design that was selected from the competition at the high school is more detailed than what you're going to see on the street, and it's just a practical reality that it's almost going to be, as a person that's got to lay it out, this is almost impossible to lay out at the scale, because we're talking either a 34-foot-wide exhibit or a 24-foot, depending on what we select. So we took the liberty of just simplifying the design a bit, but I think we kept enough of it that it's totally recognizable with original intent, so I don't think we crossed any lines there. We have, I have worked out the details on paint, the manufacturer, and that, and once we have that, I'm going to record it so that if we ever do it again, we've got the components. There's a, it's going to be traffic paint from a local supplier in Chicagoland area that manufactures it, and then there's an additive for skid resistance for it, because without that, if you're crossing the street at that location and it's raining, it'd be pretty slick. So that's very important for anybody that does any street painting. So those are some of the housekeeping chores that we'll be working out as we go. The palette is a little limited, too, you'll find, when you use traffic paints, because they don't have every color of the rainbow, so you've got to kind of make it work. Also, we will be closing the street for, we're estimating three days, hoping to do it on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Fully intend to keep the access to the VFW and to all of the businesses there open. We're basically, and Jeff, maybe you can just go to one of the street views?
Sure.
So we're proposing to put it basically across from the village hall and in line with the plaza there. I think it's a great location. One of the things I think we might have discussed in the past is that to put it on the intersection, which was one of our thoughts originally, we'd have to close the bridge for three days, and that's just, logistically, is a nightmare, and it's expensive. So I think we've got to, and the other thing that when Doug and I were, we visited Kankakee, what we noticed is, depending on the volume of traffic, on the traffic turning movements, you get uneven wear on the design. So by having it in a straight line, I think we'll get at least even wear, and if we want to do some touch-up, down the line, we'll be able to do it easier. So I think that part of it makes a lot of sense, and I think the location is great relative to where we have the run. It's going to be, we want to put it in place. I'm hoping to do it either July 22nd or 29th, depending on, you know, getting all the folks scheduled. It'll be there prior to Montgomeryfest as well, so I think that'll be great. So there's a couple of options here. One is, we've got this design, which is a 34-foot, which basically goes from parking stall to parking stall across the roadway. What I did there is just tried to keep the to parking stall across the roadway. Um, what I did there is just tried to keep the, the design from encroaching on the parking stall. It is offset from the center line, however. So the next version is basically the thirty-four foot version, but centered on the roadway. And what you'll see is the star portions of it, and I don't know if you can blow that up at all.
I don't know if I can either, but.
It looks great on the monitor.
Yeah.
It encroaches a little bit on the parking, the, the, uh, parking spaces that are on the VFW side. And I don't think it would prevent anybody from parking there. So I don't think there's anything, uh, that would,
I don't think it's going to be there.
infringe, you know, keep me from parking there, but you'd be, that tip, the tip of the kayak, if you will, encroaches in, in a little bit. So really, what, and then the third alternative that you've got in your package is a twenty-four foot version, which is centered on the right of way, or centered on the center line of the road and just is in the traffic lanes. So those are really the three options. I personally would like to see it as big as we can make it. So the thirty-four foot version, I think, I would recommend, but whether we centered on the center line or offset it, those are really the two choices we would like to get your input on, uh, first. And any, actually, anything else you want to comment, but that's really the main thing. And then what we're going to seek tonight is approval of our, uh, design and authorization to, you know, to install it. Well, I think it very, we're not really absolutely sure, Pete. Um, we're going to use, you know, traffic level. I would say, you know, from what we've seen with our traffic marking, after a year, it's probably going to be faded. So.
Because in the winter, you get your salt and your chloride down, that's going to eat that thing up right away.
Yeah, it, it's going to be faded, and I would say we're going to have to either refresh it or, um, you know, black it out or something if we don't want, if we don't like it. But I would hope that if we continue it, it'll be a lot easier to redo it, because the design will, you know, we're figuring a date to mark this thing out the first time around. And we're budgeting for, in, in speaking with the people that manufacture the paint, I think we can do it in one coat. But, you know, having, not having done it before, and it is expen, the paint is expensive, but, um, that's the plan. And then we would have to refresh it, you know, on an annual basis, I think.
Or, and to look at it the other way, if the concept doesn't work, or if it's not, you know, if we don't love it, it's not something we're married to forever, uh, we certainly wouldn't have to repaint it again, and we can get it off if it didn't work. So you do have that fallback.
Yeah, but that's going to cost a lot to paint it the first time.
Well, this is going to be volunteer, I mean, the, the Rotary Club has, has stepped up to say that they would, uh, fund the paint, and the painting will be done by volunteers. So really, we're not asking for any public funds for this project. All we really need is just some help, you know, uh, cutting off the street, really, just setting up some barricades. But other than that, we don't need any assistance. So it'll be privately funded through Rotary, and, uh, we've got volunteers lined up, or we're working on that. It'll be either Rotary or some other combination of others that have expressed interest. So I hope that we'll be able to do it. You know, we've got the support, I think, to do it.
Absolutely.
Question. The, I know, I, and I understand about the muting down the design a little bit. Have, have we talked to the kid who designed it, just so he's aware and knows he doesn't drive past and all of a sudden?
I think that's good form, and we'll do that.
We will. We have not yet. The banners are going to have the original design.
Correct.
Yeah.
So they will still have it. It'll just be in the street that.
The other thing I will point out is I'm not a hundred percent sure that we're going to do the lettering of the Montgomery in Motion.
Right.
Because that in itself is another kind of difficult layout problem, because these are like six-foot letters, and they're custom. So we would have to make our own templates for those. So one of the things we were, we've been going back and forth on is since the banners will be up, we thought we could maybe do without the, the street, uh, or the lettering in the street. So that's going to be, we're going to look at that a little bit closer, but I think what I would likely believe is we're just going to be doing the, um, the design and not the lettering.
Pete, in the different locations that you have given us, the one that is off-center, is that going to be where the grandstand is for the parade? Will the grandstand be sitting on top of it?
Grandstand's usually in the parking area, I think, right? In the parking stalls?
It's pushed back?
Yeah. So if it's offset, then it shouldn't interfere with the, grandstand shouldn't interfere with it.
Yeah, and even in the one that's on the center line, it moves it to the, uh, to the east, so it actually would be further away from the grandstand if that option.
I don't feel very strongly about the lettering. I shared that with, with staff previously, uh, one way or the other. I don't know if it's necessary or unnecessary. Uh, but if you do that, is it, uh, one thought I'm having as we're talking is the River Run kickoff, they start running this way, and we're in the top of the fire truck. It would be a really cool photo if the lettering was rotated three sixty, so we can see that from fifty feet in the air. So if you go through the trouble to lay it out, and there's, you're looking for a compelling reason, whether to face it north or south, that's the only one I can come up with.
Jack? There's this thing called Photoshop.
Perfect.
Well, I tend to prefer the, I think, the one that's showing now, where it's on the center line of the street.
Actually, that's the, that's the not-centered line one.
Can you go to that one, Jeff?
The first one that was shown?
First one that was shown was, I thought was that one. Or no, is that option?
It would be the, like, second option.
Let me see, which option is this? I don't know which option I got up here. All right, that's option one. So option.
How would you describe option one? I think that's the one that.
Option one is the offset one, and it's basically from the diagonal parking, the end of the white, to the white tick on the parking on the east side. That's, the kayaks touch that.
This is, this is option two. This is the one where it's centered, and you can see that the ends of it get into the parking spaces over here on the VFW side.
And it's not significant. The encroachment's not that significant, so I don't think that'll be terrible at all. Um, I, I think there's an advantage to having it as large as we can, frankly, so, but.
I think, I'm a visual person, and I get centering it on the lane of traffic, but visually, centering it in the space more so. I, I think, I prefer that one.
The problem with that, Doug, is we don't have a, we don't have, we have parking spaces that are going to be occupied, that are not symmetric. So we have the diagonal on the.
No, I, no, I, but that's why I'm choosing the other option, the one that's offset a little bit, because it, it, you can't do the whole space, but it helps visually.
Pete, how much, how much difference are we talking from the center line and the one that's offset? I mean, it doesn't seem like it's that much.
Like, a few feet. I don't really know the exact number.
Yeah, I was going to say, it doesn't look like it's a huge difference.
No, it's just a little bit of encroachment on those parking places that, you know, aren't occupied that often, but like on bingo night, certainly, you know, all the parking is occupied. So I think it's good form to keep most of it out of the parking, but we're not getting a lot of encroachment.
I honestly don't think we would get pushback from the VFW. The incoming commander is a member of the Rotary Club.
They'll still be able to use their parking spot. Well, I don't think the person parking probably won't even notice it.
Right.
And that's not, yeah, that's a village right of way anyway, so.
And it's not going to, we're not going to close the parking spaces or anything like that.
Mm-hmm. But you are going to permanently reserve one of those for Youngerman, though, right?
I, I prefer the one that's offset a little bit, because of what you're talking about, when there's cars in those spots. If it's into that spot and there's a car there, it's now covering part of the kayak.
It doesn't matter to me which one. Um, I think you're right about the words. I think the words would be difficult. And, and as the wear of the tires and the stuff, you may lose some of the wording. I'm fine with either option. Doesn't make me a difference.
It sounds like everybody's okay with doing away with option three, which is the smaller one. So one of the bigger ones, so we can either center it between the parking spaces, and it won't be on the central, in the exact center line, or we can center it on the road. I've heard Doug say he's in favor of centering it on the parking spaces.
And I haven't heard any proposals for the other side.
The other side is centering it on the road, where some of it'll be in the, the parking, then.
Even if you do that, when you put salt or chloride down, it's going to eat it up in the wintertime. You know that.
Yes.
It's going to eat it up right?
Yeah, we'll have to touch it up.
Then you're going to have to have it put down again?
Well, we'll, like I said, that's something we'll have to evaluate if we want to.
The one that we saw in Kankakee is, was what? It's three or, three years old, maybe? The one that, Pete and I went down to Kankakee and saw the one down there, and it's three or four years old. And it was worn, but it was really, and that was the full intersection. And all of the real wear was the turning traffic, where the cars turned. That was where, where the straight line traffic was. There wasn't a whole lot of wear on it. And they have to be salting that. I mean, that was a big intersection. Um, so it does a little bit less damage than I think it, you would think, until Todd starts putting chloride down.
I think we're, we're aware of that, so. All right, we have proposals to offset it. Not hearing any otherwise. I really don't feel strongly, so what's that? What did you say?
I, I just think, when I look at it, I prefer the center line, just because when I'm looking down the street, I, I think, it's just going to bother me, but I guess either way is fine.
If that's the littlest thing I can do to aggravate her, give me that. I just need a little something each year. There you go.
And I, the only thing I would add is that it's really designed to be a community event, to bring people from all over Montgomery, to just get together and do something fun. And that's part of what Rotary is doing, is trying to unite the community. So that's, that's really our goal, is just to bring people together, to have some fun and do something different.
And, and just to clarify, it's only June. You've still got six more months to aggravate her. I'm sure you're going to do your best.
I'm sure that'll happen next week.
All right. So it sounds like we have support to offset it, is what it sounds like. I got three head nods for offsetting it, the bigger version. Uh, is there anything else?
I'm sorry, you said the offsetting would go parking stall to parking stall, correct, Pete?
Correct.
Okay. So it would basically take up the whole street. So I, I'm fine with that. That's, I'm fine with that.
And any other?
I think that was what we needed.
Yeah, and if we can get approval, formal approval, I think that would be appropriate.
Motion to approve the thirty-four foot option, parking stall to parking stall?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yay.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Thank you.
That carries four one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pete. All right, items for discussion. We have three this evening. Uh, solid waste contract discussion. Todd?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Um, a little background, since January first of two thousand and two, the village has contracted with, uh, BFI Waste Systems of North America, which is currently known as Republic Services for our solid waste hauling. Uh, the original contract was for a five-year period, which terminated December thirty-first of two thousand and six, and the village board has historically elected to extend that contract now for five additional or individual two-year terms. Um, at this point, I'm just seeking some input as to the direction you'd like me to proceed in, um, over the, over the coming months before our contract expires at the end of the year. Some of the options might include, um, renegotiating a contract or an extension of the contract with Republic. Another option would be to put it out to bid either individually or as part of a larger multi-jurisdictional contract, potentially teaming up with, say, Yorkville or Oswego, and seeing what they're doing. Um, I'm also soliciting any feedback you might have as far as components of the current contract that you'd like to see changed or additions made. So there's nothing, nothing to vote on or any data to share tonight. It's just, it's such a cumbersome task and such a large-scale contract that I'm seeking some input and direction before I really get into the motion of it.
Todd, they've raised our price, though, during this time, correct? They have not kept the same price.
Yeah. No, they continue to raise the price. There are some clauses in the contract for the, the increases.
Okay.
We took a pretty detailed look at this two or four years ago, something like that?
Three or four ago.
Yeah.
I think the senior bag program is pretty important. I know I got some feedback that people in my neighborhood, and even though we don't have a lot of seniors in my neighborhood, that utilize that portion of the program. It's pretty important to them. And the recycling totes are a huge success out on the west side, because we would have that debris blowing out of the, the old-fashioned tubs, stuck to fences and bushes. And so I, I know that the roll-away totes are really popular. And I, I've gotten feedback both ways as far as refuse were to go that direction.
I, I can tell you that Republic and probably any of their competitors at this point would probably like to see rolling refuse totes. Um, that's kind of the way the trucks have been geared. It, it reduces their, um, manpower and their insurance costs to have that electronic or automated type loading. So I can anticipate that Republic or anybody would probably want to see the refuse carts utilized in a future contract. I can also say that Republic, at least under my short term now, has done a, a fine job. Any, any issues that we've had or complaints that we've gotten, and there are few, um, are addressed almost immediately. In some cases, I'm getting a response back in twenty minutes telling me that it's been resolved. So they have, they have really done a nice job, I would say.
I know, one day, I was upstairs in my house, and I saw Republic coming through doing recycling, and they lifted something up, and, uh, a bottle broke, and I saw the, the driver get in his truck, get out the broom and dustpan, sweep it up, and put it back in the truck, so, and he doesn't know a village trustee lives at that house or, or anything like that, so I was very happy to see that.
That's not the first time I've heard similar stories of them walking a block to pick up things that kind of exploded or whatever. I think they really do put the effort in.
I don't see any reason why we can't, uh, start negotiating another extension with them to see what kind of pricing we can get. I'd like to see us look at the, I know that it's really, uh, more of a buffet style when you do these, at least the last few times, but just kind of compare to what our neighbors are paying for their, because I know Oswego just signed a new contract.
Yes, they did.
And Aurora recently did, I think, in the last year or so, just to see that we're getting competitive pricing. And if we are, then I think I'd be okay with moving forward with, um, if, like, renegotiating this contract with them.
If we went to a rolling refuse container like we do with recycling, could that potentially lower our, our, um, our costs or what our, our contract would be?
I suppose over the long run, I think any savings would be utilized to help pay for the installation of the carts and delivery throughout. I mean, they're, they're not a cheap item, so, uh, I would have to work out the details of that, but I can certainly acquire.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would be interested in seeing the rolling refuse carts included in the next contract.
Personally, from a trash standpoint, I, I think the rolling carts, like you said, they've reduced the blowing recycling debris. I think they would do the same for the, the trash that's unsecured. You know, a lot of people bag a lot of items of their trash, but there may be a few items in each load that's not really bagged, and those things tend to blow around and litter the community, so.
My only, my big concern is that, you know, we're allowed two cans now, two, I think I have two thirty gallons. That's a pretty big rolling refuse container. I mean, I have the biggest recycling one, and I love it, because I don't have to worry about the lid popping off and stuff blowing away. So, and I know that that was an option. I think they have three choices when we got the original ones, and I would think probably with the refuse, it's similar.
Yeah, I believe it's thirty-five, sixty-five, and ninety-five gallon size. Don't quote me, but I know it's thirty, sixty, and ninety, thereabouts, ninety-six, roughly, so.
And we rent those.
There are three sizes, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, those big ones, so I got the big recycling one last time, and then I also pay, because, yeah, it's, it's an additional cost to get the biggest waste one, garbage one, so I pay, I don't know if it's twenty or thirty bucks a year to get the biggest one. So two cans, I think, is, I remember talking to the guy, like, it was the middle one or maybe less, but it's something we can talk to them about.
So you have one now? That's an option?
It's an option now.
It's an option now.
Yeah, you pay extra for it, but.
And don't tell my wife that I'm not, never mind.
I've been trying to get rid of it.
We're good.
And I, in preliminary discussions with our rep, I, I think that's the size that they would like to utilize just as part of the contract, the, the largest one. So that would be at the set rate, probably eliminating any additional.
Yeah, that largest one is huge. And I, I used to be able to fill it, but now I can't, and I can't get my, I can't get rid of it. So at any rate, I don't know that people would want that 96 one as the standard, but either way, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't start negotiating with them on this. The one question I did have is la, last time we went to the multi-day pickup, haven't really heard, you know, where season's ridge is on Wednesdays. It used to everybody be on Mondays. Initially, I heard some comments one way or the other, but I haven't really heard anything since. If it was an option to go back to the one-day pickup, people might be, I know my dad made a comment that he likes to get his garbage out on Sundays, and maybe others feel the same. I don't know. Maybe not.
See, we may be too big at this point, but we can certainly, certainly look into it.
Would the Senior Bag Program continue, do you think, if we went to the rolling carts?
I think through the use of Republic, I think that's certainly a possibility. Again, I'd have to inquire. I haven't done a whole lot of legwork on it yet, so if that's something we're interested in seeing, I can.
Well, yeah, probably cost is the issue, so maybe there's a way to downgrade the size of the container for seniors if we wanted to keep that program active.
I would agree. That's what I was going to say. The smallest container would probably work. I have a lot of seniors in my neighborhood. I see a lot of blue bags out there on garbage day.
We have about 3,000 seniors, so that's an audience that deserves some attention. Have, have you seen some innovations that we should talk about that are starting to emerge? Single stream or dual container that handles both types of material?
I unfortunately have not. I can inquire with them. They may have more experience with those things and see if there's any.
Might be a fun moment to see if we can get out ahead of the curve a little bit.
Just because I don't want to, I don't want to not comment on this stuff, the yard waste collection, spring and fall cleanup, senior bags, we commented, all of those are very popular. Wouldn't want to see any changes. So if we didn't comment on that, I think the board and the residents are happy with the status quo on that.
I think the residents are used to this level of service, too.
The other comment I would make is from the experience I've had, when volunteers have picked up litter or done cleanup programs in the neighborhood, this current vendor has been very good about accepting that trash and not burdening the homeowners with it. And that's, people appreciate that.
We will move forward with talking to Republic, and we will report back.
Thank you. Item B for discussion this evening is the US Route 30 Phase 1 update. Engineer Wallers?
I wanted to give an update on the Phase 1 that's being conducted by IDOT for Route 30, and this is from Route 31 to Route 47. It's been underway for quite some time, but they're getting to the, close to the end of the process, and I wanted to just give you a, a current update. Probably the most significant item is they're gonna have a public meeting on June 29th. It'll be at Village Hall from 4:00 to 7:00. That will be obviously open to the public. But there's gonna be some significant items discussed, and primarily the most, probably the most significant is the issue of sound walls. And so there's information included in the packet for your reading pleasure on the sound walls and all that. But I'll try to break it down as it was explained to us by IDOT. So when they go through the Phase 1 process, they go through a fairly rigorous process that is required by the federal government, and that's in order to assure that you, at the end of this, can get federal funds for the highway improvements. When it comes to the sound walls, whether you get them or you don't, it really comes down to whether or not it's a federal requirement. And they have a specific software program that they use to determine the amount of decibels and then the likely reduction of decibels if you have a sound wall. So if you don't have enough noise, if you will, from the projected traffic, now this is going out into the future, then you're, you won't qualify for a sound wall, no matter what. Now, if, if you want a sound wall installed, the local authority, i.e. the village, could install it, but these are very expensive. So in order to secure federal and state funding for a sound wall, it has to meet the federal criteria, number one. And then the, the state has a process, and the feds have a process whereby what they call the affected receptors or the impacted receptors are basically notified that they are a noise, impacted noise receptor, and they will actually be the ones that vote for or against the wall. And it's generally aligns with subdivision boundaries for the most part, and there are several areas where I think we kind of knew that there might be sound walls, let's say the Fairfield-Foxmore area, for example. So what's gonna happen is the state's going to notify the people that would be affected. Now, that may be the first row houses, and it may be the second row houses. But as far, you know, they're gonna determine how far the extent of that impact travels or is, and those people are, are contacted. The folks that are most impacted may get, for example, two votes, and the ones that are less impacted may get one vote. But bottom line is, anyone that's contacted that's a affected receptor has the right to then vote if they want or don't want the wall. So at this public meeting, they're gonna be discussing all of that, and the notices will go out, and, and the village has nothing to do with this process, so this is all handled by IDOT. Those notices will go out, people will be able to be informed. They don't have to show up to the public meeting, but they're certainly, everybody's certainly welcome. The requirement that, that the feds have set forward is that you have to have, in order to get a sound wall, it has to be 50% of the people that are affected have to vote for it. And they have to have a minimum of one-third of the people that are affected vote. So until they get one-third, the vote's not, you know, finished. And then once they get a third or more, it's whoever, you know, 50% want it, then you get a wall. If 60% don't want it, then you don't get a wall. So that's kind of the process that's out there. It's not anything the village controls, but I wanted you to be aware of it, since some of you, I know, live in some of the subdivisions that are gonna be impacted. It may not be your particular home, but it's gonna be your neighbors, obviously. So that's a new process. In the past, the state and the feds have engaged the, the community, the community leadership more in terms of sound walls. For example, when the sound wall went on the stretch between Briar Cliff and 34, that was more of a village, you know, village board decision. This is a, is a departure from that. So this is the new system that's out there. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that going into the meeting. And then there, there are gonna be other things that the village board, though, will have to give direction to IDOT on. So the sound walls are big, so that's one item that's gotta be resolved. But then there's other things, and I'll give you a few examples. We have an option, if we would like, to direct IDOT to put in what they call enhanced landscaping of the corridor. So that would be plantings along the median, plantings along the, the sides of the, of the right-of-way area. If the board would select the enhanced landscaping, then it'll be by intergovernmental agreement, the responsibility of the village to, to do maintenance on that enhanced landscaping. So the state would, state and the feds would pay for the capital installation cost, but then it would come back to the village for maintenance.
Yeah, but they, they pulled that wool over our eyes on the first one. They said, as far as the enhanced landscaping, and we said, no, we don't want the enhanced landscaping. State, you continue to do the maintenance. And they just didn't do the maintenance. And so now we're doing the maintenance, and we don't have enhanced landscaping, so.
Well, they do. They mow twice a year.
Well, that's great. Well, let's start to find them, then.
So, yeah, and I mean, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but we will have to make, we would, they would like us to give them direction so they can put it in the final document. You won't be 100% locked in, but when it comes back for final design, it'll come back, and then that's when we'll finalize it. But they would prefer to have direction from the village, because they'll include that in the design con, contract, you know? So, so I don't need to vote on that tonight, but pretty shortly after the public hearing, I think that's gonna come back. And there's a few other ones I'll just try to run through, just so you know.
Can I, can I just ask a question while we're on that? Todd, the cost for enhanced landscaping, barring the cost of actually doing it, but the cost to maintain mowing around those trees and shrubs and things as opposed to mowing on an open median is significantly different?
I don't, I don't foresee the mowing cost being all that much different. While there is some additional detail, there's less ground to cover, so it's probably a time and materials type thing. I, I think the, the true cost comes in when you want to mulch that area. The state's not there to pick up the check for that. So if you have beds along that area and you're, you're seeing things die off that need replacement, that's gonna be on us. I've, I've been through this in other communities with that kind of an arrangement, and you really, you really do have some costs associated with tree replacement, planting replacement, mulching, that sort of stuff.
Salt kill off on trees?
Yeah, you try to select salt-tolerant items, but, you know, irrigation is not an easy component, so things will tend to die off.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make sure I asked about that, cost.
So that's the, the, just the overview of landscaping, so that'll be coming back to you for direction. Something else that we talked about, it's been almost a year, we talked about it September of last year, was lighting. We talked about, I think that the general feeling of the board at the time was we were probably gonna do intersection-only lighting and not do the entire corridor from, the cost is pretty prohibitive, I think, to do the whole corridor. So that's generally how they're proceeding, but again, that will come back to you as well, just to have final concurrence on that. But we have asked them to utilize LED lighting, and they're gonna update the cost. I don't think it'll change things, but as they get closer to the, the completion of Phase 1, they'll have better costs, so that you'll know exactly where that's gonna go. And again, you can change your mind in Phase 2, but I think they would appreciate the direction at this time. Other things that will come up, we've more or less directed them that we want emergency vehicle preemption, which is the thing that allows the, the signal to be, you know, green if you have an emergency vehicle. That is a local cost, however, but we've just gone through and put that in, and all the lights on 30 for the new section, so, and we mostly have it already, like at Gordon and Griffin. So I, I think that's kind of an, I think something we want to maintain. So again, but that will come up. We'll have to, we can have more, there's options on the type of street signage that we want, if we want to light it or not light it. There's a cost to that, so we'll get more information on that. I think the bike paths and sidewalks, we've more or less hashed out, but there'll be one last review of that before we finalize it. So those are just things that will be happening, you know, and pretty shortly after the public meeting, we have some work to do. The last thing I want to comment on is the drainage improvements that are being proposed along the corridor. And I would say that IDOT has done an excellent job of listening to the local concerns and addressing them in the Phase 1 design. So they've done, there's been a couple of significant things that have occurred, and probably the most significant is the Montgomery overflow of Blackberry Creek, which is a diagonal that crosses Orchard and Ockit and then goes into Route 30, spills over 30, goes into Pasadena subdivision, and then eventually gets to the Fox River. What they're proposing in at least the last discussion we had with them at the meeting that we had on, I think it was June, I don't know, the, yeah, so I think it was June 6th when we met with IDOT staff. But they're gonna put in a 60-inch, or they're proposing a 60-inch storm sewer to basically intercept the Montgomery overflow, carry it on the north side of 30, put it into the interchange at 31, which was designed for the higher flows to then be able to convey that down to the Fox River. That's significant in that they'll basically be able to control that 100-year event with that piping. So it eliminates flooding on the south side. It eliminates the 1% flooding on the south side of Route 30. Now, I think everyone understands that, for example, 1996 exceeded a 1% storm. That would, might have been a .01% storm. So there's not like you're ever gonna be free from flooding, because water will go where it needs to go when there's a extreme event. But at least you're getting at least the 1% protection for that event, which is pretty significant. So that's a, I think, a, a big benefit to the program. Now, this is just the Phase 1. We haven't gotten funding to do Phase 2 or Phase 3. So I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but my point is, I think IDOT did a great job of listening to the village and taking that into account. And they've pretty much done that throughout the corridor and other areas where we've had some concerns with drainage. They've looked at it. We have a few areas that we're still, we've asked them to follow up on, so it's not final, but they're looking at it. And so generally, I think the, the addressing of, of local drainage has been done very well by IDOT on behalf of the village. So we'll, there's more to do on that, but I just wanted to let you know that that significant progress has been made, so that was a good thing. So that's really the overview. Again, no action required, yes, sir?
I noticed that the proposed speed limit is dropping down to 45.
Right. They can, they'll be considering this in urban section once we go, because it'll be, it'll be divided highway, four lanes, but with curb and gutter. And so when it goes to that section, that's, they want a 45 mile an hour speed limit for that classification.
Don't shake your head, chief.
No, I just, I just noted, I mean, because now we're gonna go to four lanes, divided highway, and we're reducing the speed limit, and it's gonna be a safer travel.
Right now, it's 50, right?
Yeah.
I think we talked about that, though, when we were talking about the, doing the urban median. We were, we were also talking about the speed was going to drop.
Yeah, I think that no matter what section we chose, I think the speed limit generally was gonna go down, just because of the amount of access points and volume of traffic and, you know, I don't think we could have maintained a interstate level, you know? And I, nor do I. I think we probably would.
And chief, 30 headed down towards Sams, is that 45, then? 45 miles an hour?
That's correct.
I thought it was 60. I'm kidding.
I've driven behind her.
I'm kidding. I do have a question, though.
It'll be consistent with Orchard, which is 45.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's similar design. Well, similar, but not exact design.
Two questions to clarify. Is, has the median width issue been resolved, then?
Variable throughout the course to take into account some of the things that we brought up, as far as reducing the media, where we didn't need it for turn lanes to protect our landscaping, so they have taken that into account. And it's, it was, we'll have to look at it visually. They'll have the, the strip maps at the public meetings, so you can see everything. It's kind of harder to explain that in a memo, and I didn't have an exhibit to attach, but they have taken that into account, so they varied the width of the median. As you get further west, you'll see that the median width will be what they would like it to be, but they've made some exceptions in the area that we had landscaping already in place.
You know, the, from Gordon all the way to 47 someday could be residential development. So we, it would be important to resolve how we want that to look now.
All the way to 47, though, we would have some amount of commercial at the intersection of 47 and 30, so.
Yes.
I wouldn't say it's all residential. Majority of it would be, yes, but as you get closer to 47, the land use, changes in the land use plan.
And, and I think the other significant element is there, we're gonna be starting with a clean slate, so we can have setbacks. We know what the section they want is. We can set it back appropriately, and we can make sure our landscaping is out of the way, and so that it, it does fit with that new section.
There had been a pretty nice website where people who couldn't make the meeting could offer opinions and be informed.
And it, I, I honestly haven't tried to visit it, but I.
It seems to have disappeared, but I was wondering if they might, if we might encourage them to bring it back.
Yeah, we can certainly, you know, they're gonna be accepting comment at the public meeting. They're gonna have, as I understand it, a person to record that information, so if you want to make a statement or request something, you, you're gonna be able to do that. And then they usually also accept written comments for some period of time as well.
Pete, do you have, I, I know you said we do not have funding for Phase 2 or Phase 3. Do you have any update in terms of when we think that funding would come through? I know when we first started talking about it, it was like. I know when we first started talking about it, it was like. They, they were talking like, I don't know, maybe 10 years out or, you know, they kept throwing out different years to us.
I think that it's difficult for IDOT to speculate, honestly, because of the, you know, the budget issues that we're having. So I, I can't answer it really. I wish I could, but I think we put as much pressure as we can on them to get the intersection at Orchard and 30 done. But the other advantage of getting the Phase 1 done is things will be, finally we'll have firm cost estimates. And it'll, once the Phase 1 is done, then it also allows for the segmentation of the, of the route into smaller pieces. So we can break out, let's say, the intersection as being a phase of the next Phase 2, if you will, or a segment of that, which until you get the Phase 1 done, you're not authorized to really have access to federal monies. But as far as when it would go onto a list to actually be constructed, I, I can't really begin to guess.
But we know definitively it's not in their five-year plan.
Right. I, I remember hearing those words too.
Yeah.
Right along.
Yeah, and they're a little bit reluctant to put it, put something in the five-year plan that doesn't have a cost estimate. That's part of the problem.
Couple of comment, or one question that I would have is the, the area that trustee Bond was talking about farther west, it's currently farmland, you know, and the study that they did for the sound walls now, well, it's farmland, so I don't, I would assume that it wouldn't require a wall. Let's say in the time between now and they start Phase 2, if there is a massive, I don't want to say that there is a massive, but let's say there is a large residential development like Foxmore or Fairfield that goes next to that. Would they be able to update that sound study so that they could get walls in the future? Like, how does that handle, how do they handle that?
Yeah, I think that's one we'll have to get clarification on. Logic tells me that there would be a process to update the PDR to get that incorporated if there's a change, a significant change that meets the federal criteria. Exactly how that would happen, I don't know.
Okay.
This just plays in the benefit that they should build it sooner.
That's true.
Then they don't have that potential cost down the road. Just build it now and be done.
All right. One other comment that I would make about the walls on the other portion that we already had done. If we can ha, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, to have a comment that our preference would be that it's the same design wall. I can't drop that because there are going to be two different walls forever, but we would prefer it to be the same wall.
But they're starting to get covered with the.
Yeah, so.
Ivy.
Have, have we had feedback from the people who are living with the current wall system that might inform our discussion? Been pretty quiet.
All right. If you guys think of anything else between now and next month, pass that along. Are you looking for any more clarification tonight or just?
Right now, after that public hearing, I would, and they're supposed to get us some additional information. And once we have it, then we'll schedule another meeting of the board to go over the items that we've generally been talking about.
All right. Thank you. All right, last item for discussion this evening, we have the Montgomery Business Center, Unit 1 Improvements. Director Young?
Thank you. Pete and I are going to tag team on this a little bit. There's two questions that we'd like to have some discussion on with the village board. The first is, at your station tonight, there was a 11 by 17 sheet that outlines the property that includes American Crystal and then the lot to the north, which we believe will be starting construction in the near future. So essentially, at the bottom of the map, you have Awkett Road. And on the right-hand side, on the east, you have Commerce Drive. And VVF would be to the left or the west side of, of the box that's in yellow. The first portion of this discussion is about fencing. The yellow line actually represents where American Crystal would like to propose to put fencing around their site. For the most part, it, it meets our setbacks. We might have to make some adjustments along Commerce Drive. But the bigger question is, is that they would like to deviate from our standard industrial fence code section that calls for black vinyl coated fencing. I was not here at the time, but a few years ago, I believe the board had a major discussion about the type of fencing that would go into industrial areas. And at that time, the code was changed from a standard chain link type fence to a vinyl coated black fence requirement. What American Crystal's asked is if the board could take a look at that in terms of this site abutting up to the railroad tracks on the, on what will be the spur coming in and then the spur that's to the west that's part of the VVF complex, if we could look at an adjustment to that to go with more of a standardized, galvanized fencing material. So we wanted some feedback on that from the village board. And then the second component of this is regarding overall water line improvements for the subdivision itself, which is the Montgomery Business Center. This, again, is Unit 1, so it includes these two lots and some of the drainage facilities that you see to the, to the northeast and then to the north of the property. So Pete's going to talk a little bit about the idea of, through possibly TIF funds, some recapture to the developer for oversizing of water lines.
So initially, when the subdivision was designed, it was intended to use 12-inch water main for the main on Commerce and Nell. And as you know, when we did the master plan for the village, we updated the distribution system model. We looked at a lot of future alternatives for water main improvements. And one of the things that we're recommending is to have these improvements, these mains be upsized to 16-inch versus 12-inch. It provides greater fire flow, more ability to move water from one side of town to the other. So we think this is the perfect time to do it. And we did anticipate, when we identified potential TIF costs, of some relocation of utilities and upgrading of water mains and things. So I think it's totally appropriate for the TIF. And I think it's, it's a bit of a change from when the original, original design was done back prior to the, to the change in the economy. So I think what we would recommend, well, we for sure recommend the increase in size. And we think it's appropriate to basically pay, if you will, the recapture with TIF funds so that the developer is, is compensated adequately for that. So I think it's a good use of TIF funds. It's a definitely a public benefit, and it's something that we would recommend so that we have adequate size of water main for that area. And there's other benefit to the rest of the village as well.
One clarification, so would this be recapture recorded against any other parcel or we would reimburse them for that?
Be recaptured per se. And having been worked, it's difficult to do water main recaptures, honestly, because if you do a sanitary sewer recapture, you can do it quite easily based on the watershed, the PE that'll fit into a sewer. But the problem with water main is it, it isn't the service of the population, it's the fire flow that really drives it. So one building might drive the entire fire flow. So to try to get oversized becomes really a difficult calculation to make. So in this case, though, there's a lot of public benefit to having a larger main.
Absolutely.
I think part of the confusion is, I mentioned recapture, where I really meant compensation for oversizing, so I apologize for using that term.
Just want to clarify.
Is the developer proposing to use black fence on the road facing Awkett and non-blackened on the other?
Well, that would be one of the options, and frankly, that's one of the things we talked to them about, was that we thought that from a Commerce Drive perspective and definitely an Awkett Road perspective, that it's more about aesthetics. I think that when the board had discussed this in years past, it was about aesthetics. And so the visual corridor itself of Commerce, as you can imagine, it's being cut now and it'll be under construction soon. You can visualize what that will look like. Obviously, it's not a situation where the fence is going to buffer anything. This thing is 145 feet in the air, so it's not a buffering standpoint, it's an aesthetic standpoint. So that means different things to different people. There will be some amount of landscaping that is involved in this as well. I think one of the things that I would agree with them on is the fencing that abuts up to VVF to the west and the fencing that would be essentially dividing them from their neighbor to the north is essentially, in my view, not necessarily an aesthetic thing, it's just a security thing. So if there was some adjustment to the code to look at those two property lines versus the, the right-of-way frontage, I think that that might be something that the board could consider.
I'm guessing the difference in price is significant or they wouldn't be raising the issue?
Correct. I don't know what those dollars are, but I think it's, it is significant, yes.
Can we get that from them, you think?
Pardon me?
Can we get that estimate from them?
Absolutely, sure.
What it would, just, and we're supposed to look at it from a policy standpoint, but it's nice, it'd be great to see that.
Associate it with a cost, sure. We can do that.
Okay. I don't know that I'm terribly opposed to a security fence around this. If they were to do some landscaping, not heavy landscaping, this is an industrial corridor. You know, you kind of know what you get. VVF has the same, I believe.
Correct.
Around their perimeter.
That's correct.
We let Michaels, I believe, install chain link security fence.
Yes.
I know that's in their rear yard, but the reality is if it's, I don't know what this field is going to be, south of the domes?
Well, south of the domes, there's the ability, you know, to do another building. So it could be some, some component that's a part of their overall facility or they could divide that out and, and have a separate user there with a fairly large building right along Awkett, so.
But the, I guess the short term, or until otherwise, this would be a mowed grass field?
Well, they intend to do some landscaping and I can provide the landscape plan next time. And they would also like to incorporate a berm along Awkett Road as well. So the way they're showing the fence now, the fence would actually be in front of the berm. So maybe an option would be to put the fence behind the berm and still meet your security requirements.
Any other thoughts from the board on the fence specifically? Yea or nay for or against?
I mean, it's aesthetics. It's really just about aesthetics and, I mean, I'm open to hear some other options. The black fence, I, I mean, I like the black fencing, it looks nicer, but.
I'm willing to let them do the galvanized on the, the parcels or the pieces of the, we're not, that aren't along Commerce and aren't along Awkett.
And we'll take a look at the costs as well.
We'll provide that next time.
And the water line? Didn't hear anybody really opposed to that. I think it makes sense for the overall development and for the village, for us to use TIF funds to reimburse them for that.
And the fire department, really? Right, because isn't that a big part of it for fire?
Fire flow, yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any new or unfinished business?
I have a few. Update on the railroad crossing construction? Are we anywhere? Have we made any room or should we get back on the phone tree and start calling?
Please don't quote me on any of this because I, I have very little influence.
I won't, but they will.
The last correspondence I've had with them, they cited the end of June to be complete before July 4th.
Before Montgomery Fest, then?
Awesome.
That's the last correspondence, but, you know, it is June 13th and they have a detour plan that they should be submitting to me if they want to keep to that timeline. I haven't seen anything, so.
And they kind of mentioned that at the bottom of an email in passing. At least I was copied on that email.
Right. The, the email previous to that, they had said June or July of 2016.
Maybe we could use the Montgomery Fest to kind of underscore the importance of getting that done.
I have tried using the road program and the alley reconstruction to do the same and it's very little influence.
But Todd has probably sent five to 10 emails to them since last fall specifically asking when they rescheduled that every couple of months and you get a vague response. But I think they're figuring it out. But what happened here is somebody wanted to file a claim because of damage to their vehicle for that crossing, so.
Thank you for being diligent.
Yeah.
We appreciate it. And then the other item, item I had is just to mention, and everyone here knows, we have an event coming up on the west side of town at Lakewood Creek Park on June 26th from 4:00 to 8:00. Between 4:00 and 5:00, we'll be serving free ice cream. And from 5:00 to 8:00, we'll have a couple of bands playing. The Kendall County Horses are going to come out. The Mounted Patrol are going to come out and be there for the kids. So just wanted to get that out there in the record. Thank you.
All right.
On one additional item, then, also on June 29th, we'll be conducting the Floral Bed Awards Judging. Interested residents or businesses can submit their own address or that of another address that they think should be judged from now through the 27th of June. And we'll organize that information into travel efficient routes and perform the judging on June 29th and make some people happy.
Perfect. All right, hearing nothing else, the first three future meetings have been canceled. Enjoy your summer. And Item D is the village board meeting two weeks from tonight on June 27th. With that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the two items listed, employment of employee and to discuss collective negotiating matters.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yay.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yes.
All right, thank you.